I'd like to call the meeting to order for the District of Chatwin. Can I have the opening statement, Reg, please?
As we gather into the heritage and traditional territory of the Treaty Nations to conduct the business of the District of Chatwin, we do so knowing that we are privileged to serve the citizens of this community and we shall never to conduct a business in their vast interest. Thank you.
There are no questions. No? Thank you. We'll... prior to adoption of the agenda, is there any new business? Counselor Deck?
Just looking for a bit of an update on the abandoned buildings and lot. And then, and a question about UBCM resolution.
Okay, UBCM. Okay. Any other, Counselor McDonald?
The 50th Street Southwest from Highway 97 toward the Apple Towns.
I'm sorry, what was the first part of that?
50th Street Southwest, I believe is the street name.
What do you want to know about it?
I'm curious to know, I want an update on the gravel portion of that's the Ministry of Transportation for this region.
Okay, that will be number two, new business. Any other, any other new business, counsel? Okay. Not here, any adoption of the agenda? So, one. All in favor? Here we go. Okay. Minutes of the regular council meeting held on May 20, 2025.
Motion to see.
Any omissions, counsel, staff? Okay, all in favor? Here we go. Well, we will go to delegations. Sergeant Juanis Antonio, Chatwin RCP, Detachment Commander's report. Step up to the podium, Juanis. Good to see you again.
And you?
And I was in the territory, we just came back from there, I was in, so it was great in Ottawa, so.
Oh, wow.
It was, it was a pleasure being there.
Somebody must have been really tall out there before me, or average height.
We'll, we'll leave that one.
It's a safe, I need big which.
Big which?
For having me here on Treaty Territory. Name Juanis Antonio Stevens, in Donjva, active mission in Nishnovik. I'm from the Tikamishe, Tikamishe Nishnovik in Ontario. I'm a quad, in Donam, I'm from the Bearclan. Name got Janet Antonioli Stevens. My mother was Janet Antonioli Stevens. News Ronaldo Antonioli, my father was Ronaldo Antonioli. No come miss Luis Bonam Stevens. My grandmother was Luis Bonam Stevens. Name me no show this, name me no show this Archie Stevens from Gettigansy V. My grandfather was Archie Stevens from Gettigansy V. I was able to go back home for a very short time and visit with some of my Gettigansy V family and I haven't spent much time with them, they're from the other side, they're from Quebec, the Quebec region. I got to learn a lot of information about my family, it was very, very interesting always to go back and learn about your family. You don't know where you're going if you don't know where you're from. I have brought with me one of my newer constables. We have two new constables, Constable Braden Wachtel, who is here with me today. And if you want to invite him to come up here a little bit afterwards to speak a little bit about himself, I'd be very pleased with that. We also have Constable Aubrey Lefler, who will be coming in short order, probably in the next couple of meetings that we have. And we'll be going into a little bit of that after I go through my presentation here. So this is the Detachment Commander's quarterly report. Try to do these every quarter, there's been a couple I've missed, but I think I've been pretty spot on getting them on for the last couple of years anyhow. This year, we've, I do want to point out that we're quite successful this year, given last year's issues with not really having a whole lot of police officers working and being deployed to Chatwin. So I'll just go on with our annual performance plan, if you look, you all have a copy of the performance plan there. We started off with last year's, we'll start with the road initiatives. Last year, we worked with impaired driving and that was a big thing that we really wanted to improve on, is just road safety. With road safety comes safety in other areas as well. You see more police officers out there, people think there's a lot of us out there. If you just see our red, our red and blues out there, they think we're out there. So, last year, we had 27 impaired people taken off the road. And this year, we ended up taking off 53 people off the road with one check stop from this last quarter. So in total, we've had eight check stops in total. We'd like to try and improve that for the next year, maybe get a little bit more check stops, because again, more times you see us out there, more people will not want to drive when they're impaired, high, intoxicated. And that's right now what we're working on, is the, is the education with the drugs and driving. Our distracted driving, we did get one this last quarter for a total of six, still challenging to work on that. And we're going to continue with that one as well, because it is, again, as I'll reiterate, it is the thing that's killing most of our people on the roads now, it's surpassed drunk driving, or impaired driving, sorry. Motor vehicle violation tickets, we ended up with 202. We did try for 230 and we're going to try and reach that for next, next term, this coming year as well. We need to work better on that, and I think already in this last, this last little while that we've been working monthly, we are well on to surpassing that 202 violation tickets, or at least contacts with people on the road to slow them down or to improve their driving habits. For our next, our next initiative is the, I forgot, I'm doing this button one. The crime reduction. This is where we're looking at service deliveries to our vulnerable groups with a, with a emphasis on bonds and relationship and abuses, which includes Elder and Adult Area Act. So what we did is we looked at the Revoid program, which is a provincial program, and worked with our proactive wards, so a lot of the times where people are getting, we get arrested, they go through the court system, then they're put on conditions, but then there's not a lot of work after that. So we're looking at ensuring that the people are, that are placed on conditions like curfew conditions or no contacts or reporting conditions, that we follow up with them to make sure they're in their houses when they should be. That way, they're not creating crime when they, when there should be in their homes. So, we did do two, we've been pretty consistent doing two per month, although in the second quarter, we did four proactive ward initiatives, we have a total of 10, which is what we wanted to do, that was, we did reach our goal. Our victim services again have surpassed the 200 goal of 200 contacts, that's not clients, that's contacts, because sometimes we have multiple contacts with the same client over again, right? So we have 334 in total. For our next initiative, we did work with accountability and governance, and this is where just having the members going out and being visible in our community events, attending meetings, attending those, those events like our MMIW, our Canada Day festivities, even the chainsaw car, carvings. This is a little bit underreported, this is only the times that we actually write on a file, say. But we do have members going out to events all the time, for instance, Braden just get, last weekend went out to Wolverley for a rural crime watch. Sometimes those get missed, so we did want to have, we did want to obtain the 110 contacts or meetings, which we surpassed that this year of 137. These for us, for community in Chatwin, seems to be easy to obtain. Our members are very well community oriented and really want to be out there with the community and make community their, their hometown. They've, they've really been part of the, of the, of the community and want to be part of it. Next, we'll go into our human resources. That was, I should, there you go. First of all, are there any questions about the performance plan before I go into the human resources of Chatwin?
Go ahead, Counselor Deck.
The victim services seems to be pretty stretched, are they holding up?
So we've been working with victim services quite steadily about just ensuring that there's time off, that there's a good work-life balance. That is something that the district, who is her employer, as well as myself, who's her supervisor, have been working really diligently on. She's very, very caring and very committed person and with that kind of personality, you could do get that where they do go above and beyond. And so it really is up to us as the district, as well as myself as a supervisor, to make sure that she gets her time off and everything else. So she has been making sure that she gets her time off. And, and she's really good at being able to say, you know, this, this can wait until tomorrow when we're on, when I'm on shift, right? She's been really good at doing that and everything else. This is a, a large number, and I will say, we often hear that our victim services gets back to their clients. That doesn't always happen everywhere, and it's not because the person doesn't want to get back, but we have been given a great opportunity and, and I will thank Ellen McComany for that, of getting another grant to have her full time, right? With that full time, she's been able to fulfill her obligations within, within the district as well as with Hudson Sob, because there's the, she has both contracts. Or both communities, sorry, not contracts, it's under one contract. She's been able to get back to all of her clients because of that, right? Whereas other places, you only have the 10 hours or the 21 hours, it's really challenging to get back to your clients. People tend not to call back if they're not getting, if they're not getting called on, does that make sense? Yeah, so they really, they really do trust her.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So our human resources right now is looking really good for a couple of months anyways. We do have one, one detachment commander, that's myself. By the way, that's a picture of our members playing in the golf tournament, it was a fundraiser golf tournament for the South Peace and District Crime Prevention Society. They did quite well, one of them was our victim services, Ms. Kayla Trigger, who got the longest, the longest drive for the, for women, I think, is what it was. And these guys had a lot of fun, they, they enjoyed wearing their funny shirts as well. But yeah, so we have a staffing actions for the detachment commander, the detachment commander is due out in October of 2025. I, I feel like the detachment commander's not really happy about that, but we can talk about that later. We have two NCOs right now, Corporal Chapman is being transferred out to Kelowna. His last day will be June 25th, 2025. We have Corporal Baden Ostrin, who will be in Chatwin in early August, so there'll only be about a month where we're only down to one, well, two NCOs, myself and Corporal Marika Masters. And I have to give Marika Masters a, a lot of credit, she's done a wonderful job with, since Corporal Chapman's been out in Tumblerridge, she's been taking the reign of doing a lot of the work. And then I took two and a half weeks off, she basically did the entire job of detachment commander and two NCOs and being on late duties because she broke her toe, she did it all and she was absolutely a superstar at it. So, we have seven general duty investigators. Constable Pratt has been transferred to Minidosa Saskatchewan, and his last day will be June 13th. We do have staffing plans for Constable Street for August of 2025, Constable Markwart for December of 2025, Constable Laird in January of 2026. We do have one recruit coming in August and another recruit coming in September, and those are to replace Constable Pratt and Constable Street, Strice, sorry. So though, we will still be in good hands, although we will have a very junior membership and we will be retraining people again and re coaching them on how to do, you know, basic policing, like traffic stops and, you know, your, your basic investigations, break and enters and stuff like that. We do have one indigenous policing officer, he is being replaced, so it was Constable Pratt. It'll be Constable Braden Wachtel, who will be taking over his position as of the 5th, 14th, he'll be in that position. Are there any other questions?
Counselor Smith and McDonald.
No question, it's not really, really good, I just saw that the law is changing for school zones, that it's going to be 24/7, starting July 1st, has there been any, like, I, I just saw it. I haven't seen anything else, there could be like a grace period, I don't know that, because there were a few law that are changing and the blood alcohol.
I'm not aware of the blood alcohol one yet, that's really, I think I'm going to have to really update myself on that one, because that's very important. The, as far as the, the school zones, that is a Ministry of Transportation thing. I feel like if it's starting in July, that that will be the grace period, because I mean, if it's 24/7, it'll be a time for us to be like, we need to, to, to give you a warning. We do a lot of warnings in Chatwin anyhow, we don't do a lot of ticketing. You know, the ticketings come with like severe, you're, you're 40 over, 40 kilometers, where you're getting a ticket, right? You're also losing your driver's license and your vehicle, right? But yeah, we will be doing that great grace period during that summertime, which is a good time to do that grace period. When that comes into effect, and again, we don't really act on too much until we actually see it, right? Because things get delayed, delayed, so, but that would be a very good time to bring that in, would be in the giant summer months to give that grace period, rather than having it right in the, in the height of summer, right, or school time, right, September. But I will, thank you very much, Counselor, for looking at, I will be making a note of that one.
Counselor McDonald?
Can you speak a little bit to the time between replacements for your uplinks?
Yeah, so we do try to, so I put in a request to replace my members six months in advance. So all of these staffing actions have been placed in six months before we know they're going to leave. So as we're aware, this is a four-year posting, some members tend to stay, we've had a couple of them stay an extra year, I was one of those members. They try to get the constables here before our members come out. Normally because we're already down one, right? So we will be down one when Constable Pratt leaves, but we know we're getting one in, in August. So we try to get that off within one to two months. It would be nice if we could get like one a little bit earlier, but they really do not like to get into what we call a surplus to establishment, because you have to pay for that, right? And especially with the way the funds are, there's, I think we have to claw back $4.3 billion per year for the next three years. So we're part of that federal government, we, we have to be really careful on how we spend the money. So there is always going to be, for the next, for the unforeseen future, really, that timeframe where we're not going to be fully staffed when someone leaves. It'll be that one to two month break of not having somebody there. We're really working hard to making sure it's only one to two. Gone are the days where it's acceptable to be down one member for a whole year. It's, it's too challenging to do that, and especially in the days of having to do all the new stuff that we have to do, especially with our body worn cameras, our naming conventions, all the stuff that court's asking of us now, it's, it's so much more paperwork that takes us off the road. You know, so we just really work with our senior management to try to get people in within that one to two months. So, yeah, the detachment commander and NCOs are a little bit different. It may be a little longer, but I think you're going to have, so for myself, if there's nobody to replace me right away, you're going to have very good NCOs that will be able to step into my place for the time being. They'll be very good, very competent, and they'll, they'll do an excellent job, to be honest, I already, I already know this for sure, so.
Sergeant, I just make a comment, just like help and being hopeful. At the UBCM last year, they talked about the revolving prolific offenders. And they talk about it here in our province, at the highest level at municipalities and advocating for security for our residents, right? And then again at UBCM, or at the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, at the highest level of municipalities where we get together. And we've been advocating for that to be changed, so that the prolific offender is not out on the street continuing to do the crimes, the, the big percentage of the crimes. So hopefully that'll, that'll have some effect on our relief on what you do on the street and in the office, because if it's paperwork, you know, doesn't matter if he's in there 10 times, it's 10 times you have to do the paperwork too. So hopefully that gets done here in the near future.
Yeah, and thank you very much, sir, for that, that's really important, I know that's what the Revoid program really was to target. You know, that repeat violent offender initiatives really is to target that, to keep that revolving door from happening over and over and over again. Because it's not just us that has, yeah, we have to do the work, we just have to live in the community that this is happening, and we are also getting victimized when this happens. And this is one thing that I really talk to my members about, why Chatwin's so great, because we have such a great community here that we're not dealing with this 10% of the population 90% of the time. We get to deal with everybody, so we don't have that jadedness within our members. So really, thank you for reminding me for that, yeah, that, that's another reason why the members do like being here, so. And sorry, Counselor Smith, I want to address one thing, the alcohol thing, that's one thing you want to address, is that there's two parts of that, there's the federal law, the criminal code, and then part, the provincial law, right? So it would be interesting to see which one that's talking about, so I want to, yeah. Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm really interested in that.
Okay, if there's any, any questions? If there are any questions, tell them, please.
Meanwhile, do you want to hear from Mr. or from Constable?
I'll let the unfollow. Good seeing you.
Hi, yeah, I'm Constable Braden Wachtel, just approaching one year's service here, 11 months from now. A little bit about myself, I was born and raised in a small town, Fort Halsin. Families from, my mom's side of the family's from Yellowknife. Dad's side of the family's from Dawson Creek, so I have a part Cree, part Dinnin. Always nice to be back in a small town and very excited to serve another three years here in Chatwin. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. There are no questions. Okay. And what about the other two, young fellow, you brought us here?
His name's, his name's Caden, Caden McCollum, speech.
Thank you very much for coming to council meeting, it's very important that we have young people in our building. It makes us feel younger, thank you very much for that. There are no questions. All right. It's getting, that's amazing, there's a ballas, that was very, very good stuff, no ballas. Canadian reports and A's on reports, say, hey? To put forward, okay?
Sure.
Okay, Counselor Nelson?
So we just flew in from Ottawa about an hour and a half ago and drove over from Fort St. John. So if I've seen Tiger, I am, but I just would like to report that there really isn't much to report at this moment, but I can't wait to share with everybody about the events of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities in Ottawa and what we learned, I took extensive notes and it, really, really good stuff. And if I can add in regards to the library committee, which the grand opening is occurring tomorrow. And I would really like to extend the invitation to everybody in the room, friends, family, 5:00 PM. And just like I said, our mayor will be performing, so, and with the solo dancers, not just the mayor performing, but I hope to see everyone there, thank you.
Thank you very much, any questions for Julia? Caden? Any other reports? Okay, accept, report it.
Motion to say.
Second. Okay. All those in favor? Carry it. We got no discussion items. Correspondence, CBC News article dated May 19, 2025, Reed Chainsaw Diplomacy. Chatwin BC is giving away its chainsaw carvings to other municipalities.
Motion received.
Second. Any discussion on it? Counselor McDonald?
As always, it's so, it's wonderful and heartwarming to see the actions of the district's government. Donation of the gardens to other communities being received, it's such a, it's wonderful. Do read, this particular garden got damaged, and I want to give kudos to, is it this one? Um, not this one. One of our recent donations had been damaged, and I want to just give kudos to the district's government, to them for the effort she put in talking with the community and sending others who are involved as well in getting it repaired.
This is the one that actually had damage, the week I broke off with the Prince Rupert, but it's a clean break, and they're working.
Yeah, and I did get a, get a text, an email from Counselor from the Port of, Port Edward. And he was concerned, and I says, well, we leave it in good hands, and I believe I talked with staff members. We believe that it wasn't malice, it was like, maybe somebody was hanging on to it, and it, and it released. So anyway, they were, I said, there's good people, going to be taking care of it, and that's the way I feel, and they took that and says, yeah, thank you very much, and I've seen Mayor gone at the FCM, and we talked about the same thing. So everything is, is good there, so they're repairing it. And like CEO said, they're in contact, that's perfect. Thank you. You have the discussion on the article? Okay? Accept the article? Or just? Okay, but everybody in favor? Thank you. Uh, correction, I mean, just that information, Mayor Pond is Prince Rupert Mayor. Er, Pond, just, so people, everybody talk about what I say. All right. Information items. I want I for, any to be, prevent?
Motion to see, I want to write for, one second.
All those in favor? Carry it. Reports for action. Now, it's the end?
Uh, no.
After?
Yeah, the first one is adoption.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Presentation of and adoption of the annual report 2025.
Motion that Counselor Doc, the 2025 annual report for the District of Chatwin is presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, this is in Europe, if you, about public input.
Okay. Thank you. On the adoption of the 2025 annual report. We give this opportunity, this portion of the regular council meeting is set aside to allow for public comment on the 2025 annual report. This is not a formal public hearing process, but rather an informal process. I will however ask each person who wishes to speak, to state their name and residential or business address, and then provide counsel with their comment. I will ask now, I will now ask if there are any comments from the public on the 2025 annual report. And not seeing any. Here are no further comments, I declare this public proceedings concluded. Okay, do you believe they will have the annual report, then it's been made? Right, okay.
We still need a second, and then we need to ask counsel for discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on the annual report? Okay. Not seeing any, all those in favor, except? Here we go. And Union of BCM is Municipalities Convention Registration.
I'm making the motion that all members of council be authorized to be registered for the Union of BCM Municipalities Convention to be held in Victoria, BC on September 23rd to 26th, 2025. One second.
Any discussion on it? Okay, not seeing any, all was in favor? Carry it. RE3, 46th Street Northeast Sidewalk Contract Awarded.
We'll make that recommendation to the council, award the 46th Street Northeast Sidewalk Contract. Parallel projects incorporated in the mountain. Parallel Projects Incorporated in the amount of five hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Do I have a second? Yeah. Constable McDonald, same. Discussion. Constable Nick and Constable Nelson.
So just a, a bit of a breakdown for anybody who's curious, the active transportation grant contribution is seventy percent, which is four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars roughly. And the District of Genoa is thirty percent at a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars per.
Constable, Constable Nelson?
Yeah, congratulations to the head of engineering who got that seventy percent. That's an impressive amount of money. Um, yeah, my question, I have to, um, start with the, the map. So, uh, because, because of the trade show, we have these maps and I was telling the community all about what our sidewalk projects coming up look like. I believe, so this goes into the Crown Sub all the way down to Centurion. I believe that this project also included, um, forty-seventh going, heading over to Nicholson Road. Uh, was that, is that part of a future plan or what's the story with that?
Steph?
That is part of the future plan. Um, I'm, you'll see in your report, we did include a hundred thousand dollars contingency, um, because the project came in under the grant funded amount. Um, and so my plan, like, like it was last year with the forty-seventh on West Sidewalk is to use that hundred thousand dollar contingency to extend the sidewalk as far as we can. So I'm hoping that we will be able to extend it with this extra hundred thousand all the way to Nicholson.
Okay, thanks for explaining that because I haven't seen a contingency on that. I wouldn't stand me that maybe this is more common practice than I'm aware of, but it, it's a good chunk of money and it simply is adding on as much as we possibly can. That does make sense. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, all was in favor? Carrie? R E, R E four, council meetings live stream.
I've got a motion that council directs staff to implement live streaming of regular council meetings as quoted in the seven for initial equipment and setup cost of four thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and an annual operating and maintenance cost of three thousand six hundred and three sixty.
I'll say.
Okay, I just got a question. Uh, budget is within our budget for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six? Is that?
It is not on the budget. Um, that's why it says to implement, but it, it doesn't say it needs to.
Okay.
What's going to happen is the Chief National Officer will make a report on any budget amendments that we need to make as we progress. So it'll probably be out in the next meeting and this will be one of the items on it. So it'll outline where the money would come from, uh, if it'd be done this year, if we can wait until next year and, and all these contingencies. But what this, what this does today is it gives council an idea of the cost and it tells staff whether we should proceed in pursuing it.
Constable Smith?
Um, I'm just wondering what platform is this YouTube that it gets streamed on? Like where do people go to watch this?
Yeah, well, a lot of YouTube. Uh, I'm not sure. Is that what I've viewed?
Um, the plan was initially YouTube, but that is, uh, the air right now. I was gonna figure out what the plan is, so to speak, officially. Uh, so YouTube, yes, I guess.
I guess just for the public, I'm thinking we need to be able to get your name and what organization you're, uh, answered for.
Uh, Katie, I work for P S A, I am the T V and camera operator. Um, so yes, it is probably YouTube, if not another platform, if.
Constable Nick?
I've heard people say they watch it already or whoever, but.
Well, sorry.
Oh, that's, and I apologize for kind of throwing you in the bus there.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I mean, we record, that's why Katie's here. So we're recording all the meetings. So people can watch the meetings after the fact. But the live streaming, what we, they can watch it during the meeting. And this is more for people who can't attend meetings for a referred motive reason. Um, and it just, it's designed to improve accessibility and accountability and transparency.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Constable Smith, you have? Okay. Okay, send it back to, uh, staff. Is that our recommendation or we recommend? Cause we got the motion, motion on for, right? Staff, uh?
Yeah, and that would be the motion is, uh, you're going to let us know if we should pursue implementing it. So, so do you want us to implement this and then we'll come back with the budget impact and the timeline? The timeline is up in the air right now because this is an unexpected expense and we do not have it in our operating budget for this year.
Okay, just, uh, getting this through. Okay. All was in favor? Okay. Carrie? Thank you. Okay, no, no reports for information. Go, go right to new business. And the, uh, Constable Dick, new business?
Um, yeah, just an update on the Florida buildings and the corner lot by the, uh, pretty. When you asked me that, I texted my compartner Ellen and I got very straight now. We don't really have any updates from the last time. We have been in, in really frequent contact with everybody involved. We know that there has been negotiations for the land sale on the, on the Florida buildings, but yeah, I guess it's, it's, we don't, we, we legally aren't involved with that. So I can't provide you a timeline, but I know there are interested parties purchasing all the properties in Florida. And, and they seem serious. The quarter lot takes a bit more complex. It took us quite a while to get through the different people to get to the right person. And, and they tell us that they're still doing the project. They just, because of this company shakeup that they've had, that they're having a hard time getting a firm tagline down, but they still wanted to finish it off. It's not a bad, they, they, they reminded us that they've invested significantly a lot of money into it and they haven't walked away from it. They just haven't got to.
Can I just, was, was there any strings attached when we sold that? Like was there, uh, they had to develop in an ex amount of time or?
Yes, there was, you have to, they had to do some work on it basically, which they've done with the groundwork and, and very good tank. And sold the tank. Uh, and then they were given one extension. And so they're, you know, basically their D P is, is their development permit is still out there.
Okay. Okay, yeah, Constable Dick has one more item?
Um, in, in regards to EpiPens, um, I've been trying to get some research and, uh, checking to see if they're free. And not, um, not slamming them, the locks on that's available for everybody. I think, uh, which we should like to look, try and look at, uh, writing up a resolution for FCM and knowing that you have free EpiPens for people with allergies because they are quite expensive. And there's some people that are carrying them because they, they just had one.
And I'm sorry, Constable Dick, did you mean U B C N when you said FCM?
Or U B C N, yeah.
Okay, uh, yeah, I can, I can, what else you can do is I can go through the resolutions to see if there's already one. And then I'll try to get one in. Normally our resolutions go through N C L G A and then they go forward to U B C N. But I think I have like another two weeks to get, to try to get one into U B C N. So I'll try and I'll send, I'll draft one up here this week and I'll, I'll send it around to you guys to approve. And then I'll, I'll send it to you.
Yeah.
And even if it doesn't make it, U B C N, even for N C L G A next year. Absolutely. I think it's a bonus. Personally, my personal one was great. I'll, I'll still try.
Okay. Any questions for Constable Dick? Okay, next is, uh, the highway, oh, I'm grabbing. Yeah, McDonald, yeah.
Sorry, currently late on God.
Nope.
Um, who's responsible to maintain the fence around, um, the property by the length of grade?
It'd be the property owner to be responsible for it. If I'm going to be completely candid in the council, I've set up panels where they've fallen down twice myself. This is a hazard and I can't, like legally, if we see a hazard, I'm supposed to correct it. But I've contacted the, the owners full times and they've, they've been pretty good. Um, there've been four times where we've contacted them and said, there's an issue. They've had a contractor out within a day. Is there a specific concern?
I was by there swaying and I had been met by there before there's some cuts into the fencing. So something has been entered in multiple areas around.
Okay, that's a fairly good development. I hadn't noticed that. I apologize. I'll get somebody to look at it.
You have the gravel? Yeah.
So I'm curious about the section of road from the Highway ninety-seven intersection with Highway twenty-nine towards Western Hope, but going towards, um, the post office, there's a section from the lights going, um, to the back entrance to seven eleven that has been ground quite some time. It's maintained on a regular basis. It does get a bit bumpy. Um, I'm just curious if you have any update on that?
We are listening.
Uh, yes, so that was, um, the chance natural removed, so the tie-ins for the water main replacement, um, which was done quite late in the year. Um, and so we did have it ground over the winter and, um, to allow it to settle properly. Um, and we'll be patching that. Harold Sargeant, uh, was awarded at Montreux Act for the Rex Central Park Lot, also ones they're paving that, they're gonna be doing that patch as well as a couple other patches around.
Just a question, the time, whether they're coming in to do the part one?
Um, I'm not sure exactly. I know that they're, they're not allowed to come in until after the chainsaw garden competition, so.
Said in the eight, I heard it was two fifteen's. So they, they want to get it done by the end of June, pretty much. And we're on schedule with, with all the prep work, so I think we're good to go.
Yeah, just for information, right? So we're, we're, we're good with that. Thank you. Okay, I think we're, uh, now to the public. If any public has any questions on the agenda that we've, uh, spoke about today? If you have any questions on that, hit your name, does that, and.
Please, the art chair, four point one three forty seven that. I was curious on the paving plan, how it's decided where you guys pave, how that's determined?
The C A O?
Uh, yeah, there's, uh, there's a comprehensive, uh, paving plan that's done in best practices. Basically the most needed gets into first. It's based on, uh, like Director Link has, has a long list of criteria. Uh, traffic, is it a main, for the main artery, is it a secondary artery? Um, you don't get to wait another year. Still have a major muscle. It's not first, but it's fairly complex. Um, if you wanted to email Director Link, I'm sure she gives, uh, dependent criteria for you, but it's fairly lengthy. And frankly, I'm not enough of an expert to talk to her at length. It's just, I'm very impressed with it. It's one of the more comprehensive plans that are seen in a small town.
I was just curious because I can kind of say like from a window down, um, because there's a school there. But I was just wondering because Nicholson is so dangerous for people to walk. Why it wasn't targeted versus like forty seven that was pretty wide. So it was forty-sixth, but there is a school there. So I was just curious as to why that specific area was chosen versus something that's more dangerous like Nicholson, where people are driving in the dirt and there's a corner and stuff.
Well, my, my feeling on it, Director Link can correct me if I'm wrong, would be because it's the main path to the schools. Uh, we'll cycle up that first because that's where the most children would be walking. And, and children are not always as, as a word for travel, it has, it's, it's going on, so. Um, so I, that would be my guess.
That's correct. Um, and we are following our transportation plan that was developed by our intern, Lea, a few years ago. Uh, so she conducted a lot of community engagements. Uh, we asked people where they would most like to see sidewalks and then compile all of that information into an active transportation plan. And so because we are following an active transportation plan, um, that means that we're eligible to get funding through the active transportation.
Okay. Is there a plan to pave Nicholson? Is it on the radar or is it?
Like, but a sidewalk?
You're sorry, yeah, pave sidewalk.
Um, right now, we don't have any in the future. I would like to see one there. I, it's just a matter of figuring out how to, how to make it work with the ditch and the road and all that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Rebecca Haller, five three one seven forty-five eighty street. But I'm gonna talk as a business owner downtown at forty-seven forty-one fifty-first street. So I'm just wondering, I'm super stoked.
Rebecca, on what item on the agenda?
It is the sidewalk one. So I'm stoked that parallel of the, the work for the sidewalk. I'm wondering if they would happen to be able to finish the downtown revitalization. I have talked to Desiree about it as well, before they go in to do the sidewalk by the school. It's just a cobblestone where it's all gravelly still. Like, I'm just wondering if you think they'll wrap up that one, that the last year, and they said the project will be done. So I'm just wondering if they could like do downtown quickly before.
Steph? Yeah.
Yes, it was, as you know, we had to wait a little winter and we had to wait until the frost came out. Um, parallel will schedule it to where we get, like, like it could cost us way more money if we start messing with their schedule. They'll have, they'll have their concrete laid out. They'll have their, all their planning up to the project. I know they'll get to it as soon as they can. We've all identified it as, as, as an issue. I just don't, I can't guarantee that it will be the first on their list. But it will, it's definitely underlisted and it bothers them too. They want to get it done as quickly as they possibly can.
Right. And I remember when we met with staff down there that they did promise that when they left, the whole project would be done. So I'm kind of hoping they might. I should have taken those at the meeting maybe, but they didn't. And I know they do do great projects, but it, it, it's tourist season. It's like the busiest season right now and the downtown core is kind of like dwindling. So even like having the sidewalk fixed is like more aesthetically pleasing. But thank you for your answer.
No worries. And please, please do, you know, take back to the downtown core. It's, it's an issue and, and they weren't happy about having to leave it as well. Sometimes projects get delayed, delayed, or whatever. Sometimes when the weather happens, you know, when we don't record specifically, but, um, they have, so they want to get it done as soon as they possibly can. I just can't tell you the schedule of that and have it come back.
No worries. Thank you.
Okay, any other public? Not seeing any. Are you with them?
So move.
Sarah? Thank you, Constables. Thank you, staff.
Let's start off with, I guess, the, the vision that you guys saw by the time you were in council seven years ago with this building. What was the vision of this building back then?
So back then, the vision was based on the elders and people in community who fantasized about having a building where we could all gather, a big enough space to accommodate everyone and more people. So that we could house bigger events and bring more people together because the current gym that we have is too small and because we're growing in population, we needed to expand.
What was it like when you guys decided that, you know, you were going to go ahead and do it? Was there excitement? Were people nervous? What was that journey like?
So when the organization came together to talk about the idea becoming a reality, there was a lot of unknowns. Where is the money going to come from? How are we going to fund it? So before the excitement, there was worry and stress and there was a lot of unanswered questions to make the idea a little uneasy, but over time the questions started to get answers and then the funding came and then that's when the excitement came. Because now we have a way to navigate to the project.
What would you say was one of the more challenging aspects of building this, making this project a reality?
So the, the biggest challenge of all, of course, is the budget. Because you can plan so much, but then there's always something thrown into the mix where it was unexpected. So then you have to accommodate, you know, the budget and figure out how do you navigate this cost that we didn't foresee? And so it really did come down to how to manage the money and we had a good enough contingency that all the outside things that we didn't expect and plan for, it, it worked out in the end. It all just fell into place and things happened and we're grateful for that.
Can you give us a, do you know numbers by any chance, just roughly like total cost of project and how long did it take to build?
So the bill took three years, two, three years. And the, the funding came from two different pots, three different pots. So in total, around twenty-seven million. Can't give an exact number right off the top of my head, but we had enormous help from the federal and provincial governments and then the nation kicked in some of our dollars to make it all work out.
And when you look at the building here today, what does the building make you feel when you look at it?
Connection. It's all about connection. It makes me feel so happy that we have a place to connect. Because that's what this building is all about, is so we can bring people in, we can share, we can eat food together, discuss different things and connect. You know, same with Pembican Days. That's a place to share, to eat together, to have fun, but to connect. And I think this space is going to provide that on so many different levels.
Do you have any special areas of the building that are maybe in your heart, a bit of your favorite or anything that sticks out to you?
I do have a favorite room. It's the music room because you can make magic in a music room. We have a lot of musicians in community and I think that's a great space to encourage and develop the talent. And so if people want to record, that's an option. They can do that because that's what the music room does. And, you know, I think that's a wonderful element to have in the building is to be able to have a music program, teach people how to write a song. We have a stage now where they could perform. Like I think that kind of entertainment is really uplifting and that adds a whole element of fun. So I think that's my favorite.
And then anything else that you would like to add or maybe we missed in this, in our conversation?
Anything to add?
Yeah, anything else you'd like to add?
Um, I'm just looking forward to the future and I'm so excited that all the teams got together to make this happen. And I'm so thrilled, you know, the turnout that we had today. And I'm just really grateful and full of like happy emotions because today is the day that we were waiting for, for years. Like when the idea came around seven years ago and started discussing how are we going to do this? Back then it was a dream and now it's reality. So I'm thrilled. It's exciting.